I'd like to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, April 2nd regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. This is a hybrid meeting. In front of you, we have the agenda for today's meeting. There are a couple of modifications I'd like to make to today's agenda. The first being to, on item 12 of the agenda, which is the fitness area, we'll keep everything on that part of the agenda, but remove the Hussey Brothers part of that contract. So I'll talk about the revised numbers when we get to that number, but I'd like to do that. I'd also like to table item number 13. We'll look to do that at the next meeting. And then I'd like to add, at the end of the agenda, the New Canaan High School entrance sign, and the Playhouse Theater project update, and a Wave Any House project update.
Okay.
You okay? All right. We will approve that. And then you have the minutes from the regular meeting held on March 19th. If I could get a motion to approve that. I second. And it's unanimous, I guess. You'll let me know.
Amy's not in yet, right?
Yeah, she's not in yet? Okay. Okay. You'll just let us know when she gets on.
You guys have your mic on, right?
Mine's, yes, we both have ours on. Okay. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address: bosdistribution@newcanaanct.gov. Is anyone okay? All right, moving on. Item four firefighter personal protective clothing. Yeah, Albi.
I just gotta push the button.
Good morning, all.
I don't think you're on. Are you on?
You're off. Green is good.
In the middle?
Push hard. Just hold, push and hold for a second.
There we go. Word says push. Good morning. The Fire Department would like to request $26,000 from Fire Matic Supply Company to replace 10-year-old structural firefighting gear. At the same time, that'll put us over, not to exceed $70,000 on the one vendor requirement. That's our turnout gear vendor, which pushes us up to $70,000 this year from that one vendor. This is just our spec and the only vendor that could sell us the Morning Pride turnout gear.
Okay. Do you have any, anyone have any questions on the gear? So this is six sets of gear?
Six sets of gear and four helmets on this quote.
Okay.
We have this in the budget, so it's prior approval.
What's that?
We had, we had, it's a budgeted item.
Yes, capital budget item for 24.
Okay. All right. If there are no further questions, could I get a motion to approve two requests from the Fire Department to enter into the following contracts? Fire Matic Supply Company in the amount not to exceed $26,000 for firefighter structural and personal protective clothing, and Fire Matic Supply Company in an amount not to exceed $70,000 for Morning Pride turnout gear.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. It's unanimous. Okay, moving on. Apparatus gear.
Yes, I would like to increase the cost, how much we're gonna spend to one vendor, which is Gowns Night, to $50,000. We have another rig that's doing its annual service, which is gonna bring us close to $50,000 with one vendor.
All right, any questions? All right, if not, I'd like to get a motion to approve a request from the Fire Department to enter into a contract with Gowns Night in an amount not to exceed $50,000 for various apparatus repair services.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Unanimous. Thank you. Firefighter testing service. Albi.
Yes, this was, the FPSI, the Fire and Police Selection Incorporated, is doing the consortium testing for the Connecticut Career Chiefs. They asked us to sign a two-year contract with them on an individual department basis. There is a cost of $995 to each department, which we knew to access the list, but the, I just wanted the Board of Selectmen to confirm the contract that I can sign it and agree to access the list for two years.
And just so you both know, Albi ran this contract by Doug Lamonte at Merchant Moses before today's meeting, and Doug was fine with the contract.
Correct.
So do I have any other questions? Okay. Motion to approve a request from the Fire Department to enter into a two-year contract with Fire and Police Selection, Inc., FPSI, in the amount of $995 for two-year test cycle.
So move.
Second.
Second. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Grasso, K-9 Grasso Shepherds.
We are filling in for Chief De Federico, who's traveling. We'd like to present.
Two for one.
That's it, yeah.
It takes two of us.
He's a big guy. He's a big guy, you know, we gotta fill, yeah. Fill the shoes. So we're looking to purchase a new shepherd from Grasso Shepherds for $10,000. It's a 15-month, a 15-month-old dog. We'll have the same canine handler, Officer Obando, who's done a great job. He's also one of the trainers, along with Frank Rita, who's a retired Norwalk officer, who's a professional trainer as well. And they said Officer Obando's been doing a great job. They think the dog's a good fit for Officer Obando. They've had an orientation period, and the dog's working out well with Officer Obando, so we would like to go ahead with the purchase if that works for you.
Are there any questions?
Tell us about the, have you?
I just have a question. So is this dog, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, has this, this pup been in training for, it's 15-month-old pups has been training for how long with us?
Not with us. Just been having a short orientation period with us, just to see if the dog and the handler are a good fit together. And that's a good way for us to know whether or not we should make the purchase or not. So they've been together for a little while. However, the breeder is also a trainer, so it's been going through, you know, orientation to becoming a police dog since birth. So that trainer also, you know, vets it as it's being reared.
Right. And I'm just gonna ask this, I mean, look, I think the police dog's been great, and it's such a good thing for the town, but is this just kind of the price point for dogs that are bred to be police dogs? Is, is, you know, $10,000? I'm assuming that's just kind of what it is. I just, it's, you know, for a puppy, that's on the higher end, but it's, I'm assuming a higher-end puppy, so.
Yes, it is. It's a very well-known breeder, Grasso Shepherds. He's been around for a very long time. He sells to the federal government as well, so they work hand-in-hand with them, and it's a very, you know, a very vetted breeder, I would say. And he's actually, since we've been doing business with him for so long, he's actually reduced the price. So we were told it'd probably be a $13,000 or $14,000 worth dog, but it's actually just being priced at $10,000 as a kind of a goodwill gesture to New Canaan.
Great, thank you.
Generally, when you get, when you get a puppy, a household puppy, you would have it like, the breeder would give it to you after three or four months. This is 15 months of care before you would get it, so.
Yeah, they have to go through a pretty stringent process of finding out whether or not that dog can actually do the functions of being a police dog, if it has those natural abilities to have a good scent base and a good ability to listen to commands. So they don't want to give you a puppy that's that young and then have the, basically then it would be on the handler to then not only know how to handle a dog, but also how to train one from birth. And that's, that's not a thing that police officers are gonna be able to handle on their own. So it's, that's what they do from the start.
Yeah, the training of the dog, obviously, early on, I'm sure, is very, very important. But the, one of the things over the years, this handler has had the dog primarily as a partner, if you will, and, you know, that's who they're with in squad car, and they've become a team. Could you talk about the officer that'll be assigned to the dog and how that'll, how that'll work?
Sure, it's Officer Sebastian Obando. He was Apollo's last handler. He did a phenomenal job taking over that task after the separation of service with the other officer that was in charge of that canine. Like I said, Frank Rita and Eric Grasso both said to myself and other command staff members how great of a job Sebastian Obando has done taking an older canine and having it basically retrained to be with another handler, which is a heavy lift. And they said that he's already one of the best in the state. And that was after taking on that job. And then obviously, it's a new process, taking on a new puppy and training it with it from the beginning. So I think he's already, you know, head over heels, like, gonna be the guy to do it, so. And he's very passionate.
The way the programs work, where the dogs come into schools to, for demonstrations and, you know, kids get to have interaction with it. I think it's a great program, and I think the work that the dog's done over the years has been phenomenal. Do you know any more about the puppy in terms of names? Is it a male or female dog, do you know?
It's a male dog, and the, they leave the naming up to us. So Officer Obando's father, his nickname was Mikolito, and he passed away when Officer Obando was on field training with us. So he would like to name the dog Lido, and we think that's a great, a great thing to do. So we're very supportive of that, and very supportive of Officer Obando, and we appreciate the hard work he's done with Apollo, did a great job. And now, you know, it's a great story with Apollo retiring and being adopted by another one of our officers, Emily Clark. So it's a, it's a great story, you know, and we're looking forward to a new chapter with Lido.
Great.
And will Leo live with Officer Bando?
Yes.
Full-time?
Yes.
And then just he'll bring him to work every day?
Yes, 24/7. Yep, they're attached at the hip, pretty much, literally. Yeah.
Can you talk about the community support for the dog? Is there a financial commitment the community's made as far as, I know with Apollo, there was some outside funding that came into care or food or whatever. Is there any of that commitment there, or is there?
So the, we've stopped soliciting donations for the, for the dog, and that was at the, I believe the town council last year requested that. We put it into the budget and adopted it into the budget. So going forward, I believe we have $7,500 in the next budget cycle for the, for the canine. But there's still, I believe, in the, in the area of $40,000, $41,000 in the donation account that we've had open for years and years. So that's where the money's gonna come from for the purchase, so.
Some people feel strongly about the program and wanna donate specifically for that reason, so that's why I brought it up. I know we did talk about that last year, and, you know, we wanted to get it full-time, you know, and make sure the town's committed to the program, which the town is, and obviously we're here to support it.
Yeah, absolutely. And if we thought that we needed to keep the program alive by soliciting donations, we would probably do that. But since the town council requested that, we moved forward with it in a different model. We're, you know, we'll follow that direction. But we're just excited to get the program, you know, up and running again, and we're looking forward to the support from the town, and we appreciate all the support you guys have given us.
So I just, I wanted to make sure I heard that correctly. So there's money left in a donation account?
Yes.
And that's $49,000?
No, not 49. It's in the area of 40 to 41. I don't know the exact number.
That's fine.
Sure.
So the $10,000 to purchase Leo will come out of the donation account. We'll just draw that donation account down. Once that's, once that's fully drawn down, then you'll be coming as a budget request in future years.
Yes.
So we currently don't have that line item in the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we're just gonna basically spend all the money from that account and then move forward with it being in the town budget.
Well, hopefully you have that in an interest-bearing account, because we might be getting some future, future dogs even with that.
Of course.
So, yeah. I'm actually serious about that, though, because.
Okay, sure.
It's, you know, with the way interest rates are right now, $40,000 can, you know.
It can accrue, sure.
It can accrue, and, you know, it might push off when you have to add that to the, to the budget, you know, the longer you have it in there, so.
Absolutely.
Maybe I'll call Mr. Chief and talk about that a little bit.
That sounds like a good conversation.
Okay.
And it's Lido, right?
Lido, yes, Lido, Lido.
L-I-D-O?
T-O?
T.
L-E-T-O?
Yes.
Okay, Lito.
Lito, okay.
It's a Colombian, Colombian nickname.
I said, I know, I said Lito.
Yeah, it's a Colombian nickname.
Okay.
There you go.
I apologize if I butchered the.
No, it's okay, we all do.
Yeah.
We all do, so. Okay, so if there are no further questions, I'd like to get a motion to approve two requests from the New Canaan Police Department to enter into two contracts with Grasso Shepherds for the following: $10,000 for the purchase of a 15-month-old dual-purpose canine, and $550 for blanket purchase dog canine food. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Steve, you have second?
Second.
Amy?
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Bethany, Human Services.
Human Services Director Bethany Zaro. Do you, should I start?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm here to request from the Human Services Department for approval of the following outside agencies to be issued their final grant payments through fiscal year '24 Human Service Agency grants. So these are the final payments. Some would receive their final payments, others would be divided into monthly, but we're in our last quarter, and so starting the process to final, to finish up the fiscal year '24.
Okay.
So.
And these are all previously approved grants through the prior year's budget?
Yeah, they have been, and, you know, we just have, of the 11 or 12 last years, we have the final five that we're owing Muddy for already in the budget. The largest one is the New Canaan Urgent Assessment Program. This was to be $50,000, the Board of Ed was going to, is gave already, and we just have our final $50,000, so that the town was $100,000 into the commitment.
All right, any questions?
I have a question. Bethany, sorry for being removed. Bethany, what, what was the resolution with the Kids in Crisis payment for the high school when they weren't able to staff it for the first half of the year, and then, where does that stand?
So that has been, we had a meeting with First Selectmen, Carlson, myself, Brian Lutze, and Susan Bliss, and Cheryl Jones, and we have taken the $32,000 credit and put it towards the Saks Middle School Teen Talk Counselor. They had not been paid at that point since July 1st of 2023. And so we put in the $32,000, and the Board of Ed will do the remainder 64, thank you, $64,000 in order to finish the payment off, and then both the New Canaan High School and the Saks Teen Talk Counselors will have been paid for for the fiscal year '24. And then moving forward, fiscal year '25, Human Services will just have the New Canaan High School Teen Talk Counselor on their budget line for $96,000.
Any other questions? Amy? Okay. So if there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Human Services Department to issue final grant payments to the following outside agencies through FY '24 Human Service Agency grants as follows: Get About $11,750, Kids in Crisis $32,000, New Canaan Cares $9,000, Domestic Violence and Crisis Center $2,500, and New Canaan Urgent Assessment Program $50,000.
So move.
Steve, second? Amy? Amy?
Delayed.
Yeah, a little delayed there.
Second, second, sorry about that, second.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bethany.
Okay. Information Technology, Chris Kaiser.
Mine's light and sweet and very easy to tell.
All right.
And the play for our log servers, but all it does is goes to all the servers, who's logged on, when they've logged on, when they've logged off, changing files. And they've bought back the product, so we're gonna stay with the same vendor. So they bought that back for, I think it was $1,300. And then they actually extended it, excuse me, instead of doing it in June, we'll be able to do it now, and they're actually gonna waive the maintenance fees for the first six months. So we'll get a year, six months out of the, the one-year contract.
Okay.
Got to negotiate.
So it's just, to be clear, it's every time somebody logs in or logs off, it's just that track?
Yep. Now, they've enhanced it, so that's why we wanna stay with the port changes, who connects, where they connect, when they connect, all that stuff.
Do they, do they know when you've gotten frustrated because you got kicked off?
Yeah, it does. It'll tell you. Our system, yeah. Because then they'll say, oh, it's never, it wasn't me, and then you look at the log and it, yeah.
And that includes, like, remote access iPads.
Everything, everything, yeah. Yep, we track anybody in and out.
Tight ship, Chris, as we, as we request.
Any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Information Technology Department to enter into a following contract with NetMon, Inc., in the amount of $12,209 for a network monitor log appliance.
So move.
Steve?
Second.
Amy, second?
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Hey, Utilities Commission. Thank you. So we have Rich Norman.
Hi, guys, long time no see.
And Tiger.
Well, thank you for taking the time to listen to us. Thank you. I think this is.
The three-hour meeting last week.
Yeah, exactly. I think this is pretty straightforward. Krista's done most of the work on this, and so I would really like her to present it. But in addition to just going through the contract and answering your questions on that, I'd like to make sure we update you. I haven't talked to the Selectmen since we've been put in place last June. I'd just like to update you on what, what is behind this and what are we doing and why are we doing this contract? This is an important contract.
Okay, thank you so much for having us today. So just to kind of get the room up to speed and also the public as well, the Utilities Commission was formed this last July, and the mission was to help ensure safe, reliable, and efficient utility services for both the residences and the businesses of New Canaan. We have interpreted that as our current focus being in the cellular context by providing consistent and comprehensive cell coverage to all New Canaan residents. And the tagline we've been using is "data first, solution second," because I know there's been a lot collective anxiety in the community in the last year or two or three about, you know, what is the solution look like? And we are, we want to assure everyone, our focus, this is a data fact gathering mission at the moment. So we just want to put that out there loud and clear for everyone to appreciate. Our work plan includes updating the current coverage maps, because the last one was done in 2014 by Centerline. We also had a customer satisfaction survey, if you will, it was very brief, done in 2012. So it's certainly time to revisit this topic. We also intend to develop a full inventory of the hardware that we currently have in town. You know, every little whippet and tower and what have you on every building, we'd like to assess what we have in terms of hardware as well. And we want to establish a direct communication link with each of the cell providers, as well as the hardware provider, equipment providers, if you will, and then ultimately develop a network coverage strategy. And no one really knows what that looks like at the moment. So basically, what we have done since July, we have been busy, we vetted the original plan, VCOM, that we had from the previous administration, and we did reengage with them for this study. Ultimately, they did not prevail in our minds, but, and we can get into the details of that in a minute. But what we also did was, we wound up talking to the state of Vermont, believe it or not, UCLO, which is the vendor that we are recommending today. They did a very comprehensive study, coverage map study with the state of Vermont, and there seemed to be a lot of similarities. They have main highways, as you imagine, we all drive on when we're going skiing, but then there are all of these ancillary towns, sometimes just 200 people. So the carriers are not that motivated to invest in those communities, and they have a lot of pockets and gaps in coverage, as you could imagine. The state of Vermont engaged with UCLO and did a very good job, and that was one of the reasons that we felt comfortable coming here today with our recommendation. So we've done that. We've also reached out to the Connecticut Siting Council to ask them for the maps that the carriers have provided them with, you know, and who knows if they're right or not, but that's why this is an important study to do, because we can confirm that coverage. And if there are gaps in certain areas, we can push back. Through the Siting Council, we would do it, not through the carriers, because we think we'll get a better response if they're reaching out to the carriers, not us. But we expect the current maps that the carriers have provided to the Connecticut Siting Council by mid-April. So we'll have all of this information kind of coming together this spring. And we also plan on having just, on an ongoing basis, industry experts come and speak to us at the Utilities Council about, you know, what's the latest and greatest? You know, people love to throw around, why aren't we waiting for satellite or 5G or whatever it is? But we want some industry experts to come in and talk to us about, one, how feasible that technology is, and, two, what is the cost of that? And then at some point, we can assess if that is appropriate for our town and if the taxpayers have that kind of an appetite, because I imagine those technologies are quite expensive. So, so essentially, UCLO is the name of the vendor that we would like to recommend. They have many customers. The Connecticut Office of Policy and Management is currently a customer, as well as the state of Vermont, Maine, Massachusetts, South Carolina, and 30 others that we don't have to get into. What attracts us to UCLO more than other carriers is that they are able to truly mimic the consumer experience. Other vendors that came forward to us, if you could imagine, I'm oversimplifying it, they would just have, you know, an antenna on their car and drive around, but that is just catching a signal. What UCLO does is it is able to measure, is there a signal? So can you initiate a call? And it's also, voice and data will be tested in this. So can you initiate that, and then also can you maintain it? And I'm sure we've all experienced a drop call in New Canaan dropping around, so that's very important. The other piece is too, that we are able to have residents download the UCLO app at some point and test it from their actual house. And that's important, because what we're proposing today is a street test, and some homes are, you know, a long ways from the street, especially in our two-acre and our four-acre zones. So we thought that that was a really important component to fortify the data that we will get from UCLO, and also engage our citizens, which I think is another important piece of this. What we'd also like to propose is that when these maps are available, we make them available to the citizens, and we can figure out with you guys the best way to do that. I don't know if it's on the town website or UCLO's or what have you, but I think, you know, in transparency's sake, it's very important that the public sees the progress that we're making, and information collecting is, is that. So there's also an ability, once we do this moment-in-time test with UCLO, for us later on to do spot checks if we want, and we've discussed that with them. That's not really a part of the proposal today. This is the moment-in-time test. But that's kind of the background and how we've gotten to today. So I'll let Tiger take us through the details of UCLO's proposal, but we unanimously approved it at our last Utilities Commission to bring this vendor forward to you today.
So thank you very much. We're here at the point where, for contract approval, so as was mentioned, they received two separate proposals. After vetting out various other agencies that would go and, and actually putting out a request for proposals, they actually sought out UCLO as well. So UCLO came in at $32,500. VCOM was less than that at $13,950, but as Krista mentioned, it was a slightly different test, and not necessarily to the standard that the commission is looking to perform or is, or is needed by the town. And the commission itself reviewed both. We had interviews with both parties. They were able to present their, how they were gonna perform their tests, and it was unanimously determined that UCLO was the best fit for the town and the needs of the town itself. So we'd like to come forward with a contract for UCLO at $32,500. It is contingent upon having the, the Board of Finance move monies forward. Right now, the monies are budgeted for the fiscal '25 budget. So we've got to go to the Board of Finance and ask for those monies to be brought to the fiscal '24 budget, because the Commission would like to do it right after leafout. The best time to do it is right after leafout, which would be the, you know, the worst coverage times, not to do it during winter when leaves are off. So, that, that would be June, that would put us into fiscal '24 instead of fiscal '25. So the, the approval is contingent upon that, those moving of those funds. Richard, anything?
Yeah, can, I'd just like to, like to comment. We, we have determined we want to do this UCLA Pro, and, and UCLA Pro versus UCLA Lite, and it's a substantial price difference. The UCLA Lite is, I think, $25,900. And the reason we decided to do that is we get substantially more data with UCLA Pro. And we have, we have at least one, one Commission member that is very excited about getting a hold of the data and actually programming it and doing analysis on it. And has discussed the possibility of seeing whether they can use one of our interns or something, or actually get, get a couple people from the high school together to teach them about radio frequencies and teach them about how this whole thing works.
Good timing, you have the high school principal.
Exactly, exactly. And the, the, when, when Krista mentioned that we had talked to them about coming back, what coming back means is, we, this is basically a software product that we're buying. It's a software product that downloads onto a telephone. And then the way they do the test is, they drive the car, the telephone makes a call every second. And it hooks up or it doesn't hook up. And it, and when it makes the call, if it's, if it's a light, it looks kind of like you and me making a call. This is, this is the voice stuff that came over, this is the data stuff that came over. If it is a Pro, it also analyzes where the signal came from and the characteristics of the signal. And so you can do a lot more to understand what, what the, what the actual provider is providing you, versus just, oh, it landed on the car and it worked, right? You can go back to them and you know whether it's, you know whether it's a 5G, you know what kind of 5G it is, you, you understand a lot more about it. And this was very attractive, especially to Karim that is interested in this, and this is kind of his career is doing this. So, we, what UCLA suggested, and it's what Vermont is doing right now, is start out with the Pro, set the base, so that you know all the equipment you got, what it's doing. And then as you go on and you want to do a spot check, rent the software from us for three months, go do whatever you want with it, but use the light software, don't use the, don't use the other software. And then maybe you come back at some point with the Pro. But we, we anticipate this being an ongoing relationship. These guys are independent, they do business in, I think, 80 countries. They're the largest provider of this service to the world. And it's, it really is an impressive, an impressive bunch of people. And it has an awful lot of technical skill that we hope we'll be able to, to lean on. By the way, we are probably the smallest customer. And the only reason they're interested in dealing with us is they think this is a good place for them to continue to sell their, their wares around the US.
So, and just so every, Amy and Steve are aware, Tiger mentioned it. But, so the, the funds that they're asking for will be taken out of a special projects fund? And then what was originally budgeted that we approved for next year's budget will be removed? So they've basically spent their entire year's budget, if we approve today.
Thank you very much.
If we approve today. So, just wanted them, you to be aware of that. And then also, in listening to your meeting, just so Amy and Steve are aware, the ongoing, if we choose to bring UCLA back, I thought you threw out like a $12,000 or $15,000, I, could you kind of elaborate on that?
They gave us prices for different things.
Okay.
Okay, and whether we use Pro or whether we use Light, I, I believe the price for coming back with Light was-
Well, we, I don't think we really came to a resolution on-
There was a number thrown out.
Well, the thing is-
There was a number thrown out.
We were trying to fiddle with, you know, the licensing. Are you licensing something for a month or six month? And because we don't have a situation, you know, we need the landscape to dramatically change for us to ask for a sponsor.
So do you need, I guess, I guess the question is-
It's probably, it's, I think it's on the order of $14,000.
Okay, because I would like to know that, because, you know, part of our approval of spending this money is you already telling us that you want to bring them back. So I think people need to be aware of what we're signing up for long term in picking this vendor. So, you know, I mean, I think it's great, and, but if we need to constantly bring them back, I think we need to understand that this is a longer term financial commitment and, and, you know.
You're right, I, I think that we will also generate more trouble around town with this kind of thing. For example, Russell Kimes has, has bought Skylink. Well, we got involved with him to see whether that was interesting. And he knows it's, he knows it's expensive, and he knows it's too expensive, right? So he's, he's got a problem there. But if we come up with things that, that can go across the town immediately, we will come back and do that. We just don't know what they are.
And in terms of, you know, practical applications, another reason why we are favoring this more granular data, and it catches signals every millisecond, not every second, which matters when you're driving a car even 25 miles an hour, right? You have much richer data. And our thought process was that, should we have to challenge carriers, right? If their maps come back, which are inconsistent, which is my guess, we want to have the credibility, and we felt like we had more credibility as a town if we invested in this richer product. And to your point, you know, something dramatic would have to happen where we would bring them back for a spot test. In our minds, it's not like we're going to ask for this every six months. I mean, maybe nothing changes for two years, we don't know.
The, the, one of the functions that we, we have set for this is we want to be able to know the coverage at every, every building in the town. Every house, right, everyone. And that's, that's what we anticipate being able to get to, and being able to deliver it. And we don't know how the delivery will go yet. But if you take a look at what Vermont did, if you sign onto the Vermont, the Vermont coverage system, you can look at the entire state, and you can zoom in to see a cow on a, on a dairy farm in the middle of a valley. It really, it really is incredible. And they have gone toe to toe with the providers and, and, and with, was it the FCC they've been, they've been arguing with as well? Because the FCC maps aren't good enough. But our function was, we want it, we want it for every building. And one of the things that VCOM would provide at one a second, one a second if you're driving 30 miles an hour is 44 feet. So that says you got a data point every 44 feet. That's not bad, but if you've got a very steep area, it could, the interpolation of what, how that map really should look is not necessarily great. It's probably usable, but we thought we ought to do, do it as well as we can. And on Pro, as, as Krista said, you can crank it down to every millisecond.
Amy's got a question.
Amy?
It's such a-
So, so I had a question, just looking at-
She's back.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, and, you know, I'm paying a premium for this Wi-Fi that doesn't work, so.
So it's not only in Connecticut, it's also in other states.
And, and Krista, so, this data, when you get it, it's a point in time, does it matter when the data is collected, or is it relevant? You know, like, we collect, drive by somebody's test at noon, is it, you know, the same, you know, it's the same at 10:00 PM? Is, does it work that way? So once we have the data, we know how it works, it's not time dependent?
So, to that point, we keep saying yes, first we, first and foremost, we want these leaves on the trees, as silly as that sounds, because that creates density. But we did ask UCLA if they could, if we have certain areas we want to test at certain times of the day, like on a school line pickup at 3:00 in the afternoon, you know, in terms of bandwidth, they are able to accommodate that for us.
Okay.
Right, versus Sunday at 3:00 AM?
Right.
It matters a lot.
So, so deliverables, 4.5 on the presentation, what, what should we expect as far as what this report will look like? Can you talk about that a little bit? I mean, they show some examples here. So this says, we're getting a raw wind desk, test data CSV extract, there's just three things, an executive summary report, do they, do they give you any more than that? Did you, do you have an example of what we might expect to see?
Well, we're going to get first and foremost the maps. We are also owning the data, which is what we asked for. And as we mentioned, they are going to do analytics for us. I mean, it's not just doing the test and walking away. And Karim, one of our Commission members, again, he put together a 40-page proposal of the kind of data he wants, and made sure UCLA said that they could deliver-
Oh, so they'll customize the, the report for you a little bit?
Well, they'll, they'll, yeah, they'll customize it to, if we have specific questions about, you know, bandwidth at certain times of day, the locations will come out in the maps.
Because we know some of the zones that are concerned over the years, so that's, you know, part of that customization.
That will certainly be covered, yes. And we are going to get the data. So if we have additional questions, we can manipulate it, we can ask them questions about it once we've manipulated it. I mean, that's the beauty of owning the data.
I think that the, the ultimate that I would like to see is not only a map, but a map like you would see on, on, on Zillow, right? That you come in and you can, you can go down to a specific street address and see the coverage of that street address, for every address in New Canaan. And it would be online, it would be available to everybody in town. All the real estate agents, everybody, which probably makes it available to everybody that isn't in town as well.
Which may be good or bad for real estate, but let's just-
I'm a real estate person, may not be happy about it.
Right, so we can all debate that as we go forward.
And Tiger has been wonderful in providing them with maps of town already that we thought we could overlay the information on. So it would be kind of that Zillow-like format that we're talking about. So it would be very specific.
I, I can tell you that when I asked, when I asked the Siting Council, what does the map look like you're going to send me? I got an eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper with a map of New Canaan and colors on it. It did have the streets drawn on it, so we could get an idea. But the question is, how far can you zoom in on that?
And a lot of the carriers project, we're finding, they just model coverage. So this is like, you're really, they're going to have to answer to it now, which is nice.
Yeah.
Is, is there anything the public can do? I mean, obviously, we've all had speed tests at home. Is there anything that the public can participate in that would help the project? In terms of, you know, will they ping off people's devices or anything? Or is that another whole level?
I mean, I, I kind of see that after this initial moment in time test, because they'll find out that we've done this, they'll become familiar with this UCLA brand, and you can download the app and test on your own phone. So I think it's, you know, once we initiate this test, have some data to share with the public, maybe that's when we can do a public service announcement and let people know they can continually test it.
Yeah, they showed us their crowd, their crowdsourced data when we first, when we first talked to them, and we were able to see it on the screen and zeroing in. And the crowdsourced data, which is every time you test your phone, and on UCLA, they know where you are, and they know how connected you were. And that's one of their data points.
Can you volunteer, can you volunteer the data to the-
Yeah, you just do it today on your phone, you will be in their database.
Okay.
Now, the question is, can we get it out of their database? You got to buy the crowdsourcing data. This doesn't buy the crowdsourcing data, this, this buys the drive test.
So you're not helping us, Steve, if you don't?
Well, I mean, I'm saying, we went for the super duper deluxe model, I thought maybe we could get it.
We brought the, well, technically high model.
But the other thing with, I mean, I think crowdsourcing is very intriguing, but it's not where you start. Because, for example, how do you get everyone to participate? You can't guarantee it. So if in one neighborhood, 100 residents participate, but in another neighborhood, 2 do, how reliable is that data at the end of the day?
Or Diana Carlson, who doesn't like to share her data? I would not be the one downloading and sharing.
There you go.
So, you know, it's all like, where you are on the-
You know, if you're in a dead zone, you can't do a UCLA speed test, so you, you will not show up in their database.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, and the other thing that happens with crowdsourced data is the time issue that Amy talked about, they all come in at whenever they did it, right? So it's not a, you don't know when this is from. It is just, here it is. You can look at each individual dot, and you can say that was done at 3:31 in the morning. Who knows why they did that call, but that, you know that, but the one down the street was done at 9:00 AM or something.
Oh, this is, guys, this is a huge improvement over, you know, Centerline, we're dealing with 2014 data. Just imagine 10 years ago, you know, we're still looking at data that's a decade old, and now we're going to have actual, up to the minute, new data, so.
And the other thing I don't think we, we don't realize, is we really don't realize the hardware that's in town, because it doesn't have to come through the town to get put up on a telephone pole. It goes to a Siting Council in, in Hartford. All of the, all of these antennas that go on buildings, et cetera, we may or may not know, which is why it really is important to get an inventory of where this stuff come from. And one of the, one of the vectors of how will we try and increase coverage is, if we know where it's coming from and who owns it, can we talk them into doing something bigger and better? And give them more coverage out of that spot.
Great, and over like, this is over like a three day period where UCLA comes in and-
Right. Then the, the plan is to do it during business hours. I mean, the base case is during business hours.
And, Rich, when do you think, so we do it when the leaves come out, how quickly then does the data get turned around for you guys to do your machinations with it?
Oh, I, I think, I think the drive test takes three days. I think they'll take a week or two weeks to turn, to turn the presentation around, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is great. I mean, I, as, as Krista said, you know, we need data first, and that's what we've been sorely missing, everyone just has their experiences. But, I mean, if you have the data, and then you're able to challenge other providers with what they represent as coverage versus really what it is, I think this is, is a huge improvement. And I agree, you might, you might as well do it right, versus do the cheap version.
And just as a note on, outside of this contract, one of the conversations that I had with Rich and with Sven about the committee and coverage is, in addition to sort of figuring out, you know, sort of what, what are our next steps to improve coverage for the community, also educating the community on, you know, both of us got an email this weekend from a concerned resident who doesn't have coverage, but has no idea that there are steps that that resident could take in an emergency, even though, you know, and so, you know, sort of the, being able to text 911 even if you don't have coverage, like, if you have an iPhone 14, like, our, our residents need to know these things. And, and I have charged the Utilities Commission with making sure that we have outreach to the community, so that while we are moving forward on this initiative, we also are educating the community on what they can do to, to help themselves, and, and what their options are while we're waiting for, for maybe better coverage, you know. So, I think those are important steps that the Utilities Commission can do to, to help the community, so.
Yeah, that's a great point. And all, all that you guys have done so far with bringing this issue forward, and, and the work that the Utilities Commission has done. And, you know, as Krista said earlier, you, you've been very, very busy, quietly busy. You've had your meetings, but there's been a lot of work in between getting to this point. So, the community really thanks you. I mean, this is, I think affordable housing is number one, but cell coverage is number two in terms of the, the community concern. So thank you for everything you guys have been doing to get us to this point.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, so if we have no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve or request from the Utilities Commission to enter into a contract with UCLA in the amount of $32,500 for cellular coverage drive test services.
So moved.
Steve, second.
Second.
Amy, it's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. All right, netting, water tower field. John and Todd, thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The Parks and Rec Department is seeking approval to enter into a contract with GGB Sports out of Middlesex, New Jersey, to replace 140 feet of netting and 15-foot posts that will be going on the water tower one field. There will be 70 feet of netting on each end zone with five 15-foot tall posts on each end. This will completely replace the existing net system on both ends of the field, which has been on the water tower field one since the initial install of the field. We determine it would be best to replace the post and netting systems due to the age of both the netting and the post. Excuse me. Three vendors were asked for prices, and we want to hire GGB Sports, who was the low bidder for both the materials and the install. GGB has installed two netting systems at Dunin Stadium for us in the past, and they provided quality materials installation on both systems. GGB's price was $17,574.82, with a 5% contingency of $875.
Better?
Love that, thank you.
For a total of $18,449.82, and the following money is available in the fence capital projects.
Any questions?
Any look difference between what's there? Oh, sorry.
No, go.
Any, any difference in appearance, public wise? I mean, the nets have been there forever.
Nets have been there forever.
The nets will be a little longer, and we'll have five posts instead of four on each end, so it'll give a little more coverage, a protection on both ends.
So it's not going to, substantially, the looks are pretty much the same.
Aesthetics will be the same.
It's still going to be black posts, black netting, blends in, the best you can.
I mean, you realize how important those things are when you see those lacrosse balls flying around on the fields.
That's it.
That's like-
And that will give us a little more coverage on the back end, close to the tennis court where people walk on the path also, so.
Okay, thank you.
Amy, any questions?
Freeze again.
She's frozen, you're frozen.
How many do, a little clap there.
Amy, you might be better off by turning off your video, it gives you a little more bandwidth, and then we can hear you.
And ask for a refund for the Wi-Fi.
Okay, yeah, to five different places to try to get Wi-Fi. Quick question, how, yeah, I'm, I'm always interested intrigued with bids when they are so disparate. I mean, you know, you have netting nerds at three times the, the amount, is this like a, why?
Could be different vendors they use for installation, or their type of systems, so.
It's just, I mean-
We don't, yeah.
It's weird.
We were, we never heard of netting nerds before, really. It gives us the third price. We can't believe that they'd be that much more, providing the same materials, but that's, that's the- But that's, that's the quote they gave us, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
In conversations, Amy, with Tiger on some of that issue with other bids we've gotten, it's, it's more like people wanting to get their name in here and not necessarily really wanting the business, or just throwing it out and saying, hey, if they're willing to pay it, I'll, I'll do it. So, I don't know. I don't know.
Netting nerds.
Yeah. Well, I mean, to sharpen their pencils. Okay, any other questions? If not, I, if I could ask for, oh, now I'm not gonna know if Amy's seconding. So you say it.
I can speak, I'll speak.
Okay. All right, so if I could get a motion to approve a request from Parks and Rec Department to enter into a contract with JGB Sports LLC in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-two cents, plus a contingency of eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for a total cost which is five percent, just so everyone knows, instead of fifteen, for a total cost of eighteen thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. The project entails the replacement of the netting system at Water Tower Field One.
So moved.
Steve, do I have a second?
Second, second.
Okay, thank you, it's unanimous, thank you.
One last question, guys, timing. When are we, when are we expecting delivery of this? Is it after the seasons are over, summer, or is it soon?
As soon as we can get it ordered, we'll get it up.
We just need to, need to get them a purchase order.
And then. We should see it up then quickly.
Probably within a month, hopefully. Yeah, it'll be soon.
All right.
Thank you.
So the next item is an amended item on the agenda for the Waveney Fitness area. John, thank you.
John is giving you a master plan right now. That was designed by our landscape architect for the project. And behind that is the survey as well, so. But, to begin, good morning. The New Canaan Park and Recreation Department is seeking approval to enter into contracts with three qualified vendors. The vendors include Game Time MRC, Pat Corsetti Inc., and Rubber Recycle. The three vendors are under purchase agreements. To start, the Waveney Playground Committee selected Game Time MRC for equipment and design. The equipment is accessible and designed for ages thirteen and up. Under Connecticut State contract, we request to purchase the Gladiator for fifty thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. And the Gladiator is, there's visuals on that memo that you have in front of you. So the, the color scheme will be browns, tans, and grays, which blend in very well with the site. And secondly, the Park and Recreation Department requests to enter into Connecticut State contracts with Pat Corsetti Inc. out of New York. They will serve to install the equipment. The total price for Pat Corsetti Inc. is eighteen thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars, and we are adding a ten percent contingency, making the total twenty thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. We also request to enter into a purchase agreement with Rubber Recycle to supply and install the safe and accessible port and place surfacing. The surfacing will be tan, and the total price for the supply and install is twenty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. And we added a ten percent contingency, making the total price twenty-six thousand thirty-five dollars. All of the money is available and budgeted within the playground replacement account, and the total with contingencies is ninety-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Any questions?
So, so based on this map, the location of the equipment hasn't changed, right? It's pretty much the same, it looks close to where that is.
The fitness equipment is gonna be moved east from where it is now, so that the playground will, equipment will be in that section.
So as you drive into Waveney, the road, I'm just trying to get my bearings on this.
Yes, as you come up Waveney Road from South Avenue, the fitness equipment will be on your right side. But there's gonna be, you'll see there's just quite a few trees and plants that will be planted to create a buffer.
That's why I'm a little lost. So all those new, those are gonna be new plantings there.
New plantings. That we've, we've had Keith Simpson working on design. And even though we're using colors that are neutral in, in nature, you know, the tans and browns and grays, we still wanna shield it off. And we don't want people stopping on the edge of the road, dropping off kids or anything like that, so.
And you're showing a path from where the skating rink location is. There's a little pathway there that connects, there's a, the road in and there's a path off of that? Is that correct?
Correct.
And that path is new, then?
Yes.
Is that a port and place as well, or is that just a?
That will be asphalt, or for the playground portion, we are getting, the plan is to have bricks. So donations will be carried out, and they'll have a brick legacy walkway. So that will be more so for the playground portion of it. But if we could incorporate it into the fitness area pathway, then we will. But it will not be the port and place surfacing.
If I can ask, Chris, so the fitness, the, the fitness equipment is intended for older kids and adults, right? And where, and the playground is gonna be adjacent to it, correct, or nearby? Is, I think, I remember earlier, and I don't have the, whatever you handed up, is this gonna be like fenced in to keep like little guys from running around and, you know, jumping on it? Are we, how is that gonna be, how is that gonna work? I mean, are we worried about younger kids, you know, jumping on this stuff? Because that's what young kids do.
Right, so we're gonna have a guide rail going up the pathway to border the fitness area and the playground. That whole entire site will be bordered by a guide rail. And then the, the fitness area is separate from the playground. So there'll be a distance between the two, which will, a younger kid will be on the playground as opposed to the fitness area, because it's, it's that separate area, separate walkways. So they'll stay on that portion of it.
Isn't the fitness, isn't the new playground area, they're planning to fence that in? Isn't the new playground?
Completely haven't determined exactly how much fence we're gonna put around the new playground area and the fitness area. With them being separate areas, we think the kids will go to what is age appropriate for them. And that, that's part of the problem we have right now, is the fitness equipment is used as a playground. And unfortunately, it's not, it's not playground equipment, it's truly fitness equipment.
Yeah, I mean, it's one thing that our intention is thirteen and older, but, you know.
And it will be, it will be signed that it's supposed to, be thirteen and over. But a kid sees something to play on, it's like climbing on a stone wall, so.
Yeah.
This is all special needs appropriate fitness equipment? Because I think that was the original intent of the first round of it.
Right.
Right, it's accessible, and half of the equipment is completely accessible. So that was our major design for it. So we're very much focusing on that for the playground area as well.
What, what's the use for life of this equipment? Do we know, how long will this last?
On their site, it says decades. The current equipment, I believe, is from two thousand one. October two thousand one was the current equipment that's up there now. It is a different material, so I could give you a final answer on that. But, but they predict decades, so over ten years.
That's one of the reasons why we wanna push this forward before the playground, is because we've got equipment that is basically falling apart. So we're at the point now where we'd be removing items as they, as they break. And otherwise, we have the safety concerns, so.
Hey, John, do you have an idea of how well you, I mean, I know the equipment there is, is older now. How well utilized this was? Because remember, this initial equipment came as a grant, right? And then, you know, it was free, but then, of course, it falls apart and we have to replace it. Do we have, do we know how much people actually use this equipment?
Anecdotal, since my office is up there and I drive by way too many times a day and things like that, there's quite a lot of use. When I say quite a lot, it's nothing, it's quite common to see two people, three people there on the equipment at one time. You know, of course, a day like today where it's raining, there'll be nobody. But then a beautiful day, you could also have a dozen out there, people actually waiting. But that's, I don't have any statistics on how much use we have.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
And the, the plan is, once we get this in, will you, the other playground, we've talked about removal of all that equipment. I mean, that's still an issue where we need to.
Once this is installed, we'll be removing the rest.
And then you'll make whatever area there, that's the beginning of this newer, larger project that we're.
The newer, larger playground. And with the timeframe that we're looking, we're hopefully install will be this summer for the fitness equipment. And then after that's all installed, poured and places in place, we'll remove the other stuff. And since there'll be a period of time before the playground goes in, we'll probably just seed it, so that it's, you know, it won't look like a construction site.
Yeah, that was the next question. There's, there's no synergy in terms of getting both port and places at the same time, right?
No.
Yeah, because that's a whole, that, developing that, that's a whole new space up there, where the new playground space. Yeah, okay.
Any other questions, Amy?
Nope.
Okay, all right. If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks Department to enter into contracts with the following vendors in order, in order to account for all, for most aspects of the new fitness area. MRC Equipment, fifty thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. Pat Corsetti Inc., twenty thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars, which includes eighteen hundred dollars of contingency, which is ten percent of the, about ten percent. And then Rubber, Rubber Recycle for twenty-six thousand thirty-five dollars, which includes twenty-three hundred and fifty dollars of contingency, another approximately ten percent contingency, for a total contract of ninety-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second, second.
Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for the map, that was very helpful.
Yeah.
Of course, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, we can leave one for Amy.
Yeah, I shot her, I shot her picture.
Yes, Steve sent me, thank you.
Okay, great.
Can we bring the, the sign, the one that was added forward, just so?
Oh, sure. Amy, do you have any problem with move the height, the PTC or PFA and the?
No, sure, sure.
Oh, yeah, we added three items at the beginning, and we're just gonna move forward the, the sign, the high school sign, because we have the Principal Egan and three members of the PTC here, PFA.
Thank you.
I can't remember now, I'm getting backwards. Is this PFA or PTC? PFA. I'm like, I'm trying, I can't remember anymore. It's been a few years.
And we have.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for adding it. I'm joined at the table by Ann Wagner and Sarah Rada. They're the, the co-presidents for the PFA. And then Heather Bollinger is the, she's the vice president of charities and donations, gifts?
Gifts and grants.
Gifts and grants, fantastic. So thank you very much, it's a longstanding project. I'm gonna let the ladies take it forward. It's been, we've gone through every single approval that we needed so far. So we went to P&amp;Z for an eight dash twenty-four, that was granted. We had a sign site plan application before P&amp;Z, that was granted as well. The Board of Ed made their final approval last night, and now we're here for contract approval. But I'll let the ladies talk you through the project. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, I'm Ann Wagner, one of the co-PFA presidents, thanks for having us today. We're here today to seek approval for the Parent Faculty Association of New Canaan High School to enter into a contract with Diane Starr of DB Landscape Designs, not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars for the construction of a new campus entrance sign at New Canaan High School. We're gonna break our presentation into just three sections for you. The first being why we're here, which I've just briefly stated, but we'll go into a little bit more detail. Second of what we're posing, and the third is how we will do that. As first mentioned, we're here to address the front sign of the high school. And you may have driven by it dozens of times, maybe hundreds, and might not have noticed it. This granite slab sign was a gift from the class of nineteen ninety-eight. And the second picture in this slide shows an image of that. It was a replacement for the previous sign, which is shown in the first picture of the slide, and that was made of carved wood. While the granite sign was, no doubt, a welcome sign, a welcome change twenty-six years ago, it is now proportionally too small for this location. You can see that in the first image of the slide. It's difficult to read from the road. It's also not weathering well, as you can see in the third image of the slide, where there is some corrosion. So we have been in active talks with Principal Egan, our exec board, and as Tiger said, we've gone through several approvals, all being with the BOE, Town Council, and P&amp;Z. We're very proud of our schools, and as a PFA, we're representatives of the high school, and we would like to honor the excellence by having a new welcome sign. I'm gonna pass this over now to Sarah, excuse me.
Great, hi, Sarah Bright. So our overarching goal, as Ann said, was to design a sign that would really reflect the character of New Canaan and the excellence of the high school. And so we worked together to come up with a sign that we thought would achieve that while also being low maintenance and would stand the test of time, hopefully decades. So we took some inspiration from the new library, and you'll probably notice some similarities between the two. The new sign would measure three and a half feet high by twenty feet long by about two feet thick. And it will feature architectural metal letters that match the letters that exist on the high school building now. So you'll have symmetry between the two signs. It will be built in a very gentle curve that follows the curb line of the entrance there at Farm Road. And in the appendix on the last page, you'll see where the sign will actually sit at the location. And then when completed, we, our hope would be that this will really be a place that reflects our pride in our school. And we can see families coming on the first day of school to take a photo there with their children, and on graduation, with, standing with their caps and gowns. And so now, Heather, we'll talk to you about how we're gonna do this.
Well, as you all know, we are very fortunate to live in a very giving community. And we're excited to say that we can fully fund this project with a, not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. Today, we can do it this year with no additional fundraising. And we, as Tiger mentioned, we've already received all of the approvals necessary along the road. We're hoping that this is perhaps our last stop. And with your approval today, we can hit the ground in May and have this sign completed in time for this year's graduation for the class of two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? I just have one, and it's just a follow-up on a question that was asked at the Town Council. Have you had any opportunity since then to think about how you might recognize the donation of the class of nineteen ninety-eight for that sign, since that meeting?
Yes, we have located, we have located a, a few different areas to put the sign on the campus. One of them, one of the possible locations is an interior courtyard. If you're familiar with the high school inside, if you haven't been, it's near the cafeteria area. There's an interior courtyard, and it actually has a ram.
Yeah, the granite, the ram and the granite slab now, and that, what was the sophomore courtyard?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so now we, we're thinking in the mulch area behind that.
So it would be something that would be recognized and seen by the, the students.
Great, thank you.
And P&amp;Z asked about shadowing of letters, they gave it a lot of detail, so.
Yes, they did.
We covered all that, so it looks as though, you know, the sign looks amazing. And as far as the lighting of it, is the current sign lit?
It has existing wiring. We had, we worked with Scott Olson, who is in the District Facilities Team. It is wired, but it isn't working. We're in conversations with Scott. In fact, we met with him yesterday to talk about this, and, and we're exploring a couple of different options. The lighting portion of this project wouldn't happen until the sign was completely built, because he needs to know exactly where it sits. That's an ongoing conversation we're having with Scott. What we hope is that we'll find a light that will not run into those scalping issues that Dan pointed out to us. But this is gonna take a little bit extra research.
Well, having it lit, well, would be a great addition so that, you know, at night, that, you know, you, especially for folks coming as the time changes, you know, there's plenty of gains and things that happen there at late at night. So having that sign lit would be great.
And the, the letters themselves are actually pretty reflective because they're a clear anodized aluminum. And so as, at this location, as vehicles are coming up, the headlights are going to hit those letters. And so we, in a way, would like to see first how visible this is going to be, because it might not actually need a lot of, of lighting. But that's something we can determine once the sign has gone in. We have plans for the lighting if we do decide that that's necessary.
And it's within that great budget number as well.
And P&amp;Z, and B&amp;Z approved that.
Yes.
Right.
And P&amp;Z approved the, the uplighting itself. You know, given the fact that we don't, they don't want to see it carry past the wall and the scalloping issues and trying to locate the special, the, the perfect spot for the lights to be able to then shine the sign correctly. So the, the contract itself is with DB Design for twenty-eight thousand, eight fifty-five. I added a ten percent contingency only because there'll be some excavation and some other things going on for two thousand, eight eighty-five, which gives a total of thirty-one, seven oh four. And then we're asking for a total project not to exceed thirty-five thousand, which was approved by the BOE. And that delta is for the lighting itself, specifically to buy the lights. The installation will be a joint venture between the BOE, Scott Olson, he's a licensed electrician. And then if we need to trench for any additional conduit or new conduit, the DPW will trench the conduit, trench that for them as well. So that portion is just basically the purchasing of the lights and then we'll install them with the current manpower.
Any, any questions, Amy?
No, it looks great. Thank you so much.
We just want to make note that we have been able to fill all the grants that our faculty and staff has requested. So I think it's important, though, to say that this is, we are fulfilling our main mission statement as a PFA. But in addition to that, we're able to do this sign.
Right.
Oh, great.
As well as all of the programs and activities in addition to our grants that we fund throughout the year.
Sometimes those questions come up by the public.
Yeah.
So just so it's noted.
That's great. Well.
Certainly, certainly have come a long way from the original, the original signs that I remember were made by a student in woodworking class. So it's been.
Yes.
Walt Jacobs, you work for the Highway Department.
This is quite a, quite a, quite an upgrade. So congratulations.
And thank, thank you to all of you for all your hard work and many meetings and many light, nice meetings. So I know it's not an easy lift to do something like that in cooperation with the town. So thank you for all your efforts and thanks. So if there are no further questions, if I could get an approval of a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with DB Design in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars for the installation of a new stone wall and entrance sign at New Canaan High School. Steve, do I have a second?
Second, second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Moving on to pave twenty twenty-four local roads, number one. Tiger.
All right. Thank you very much. So this first item is for our, the first portion of our paving program for this year. We went out to a public bid and solicited from approximately eight or nine separate vendors. We had four bids come back. FGB was the low bid at one million, eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and twenty-five cents. We added a fifteen percent contingency for a hundred and sixty-two thousand, two fifty for a total project of one million, two forty-three, nine fifty-four, twenty-five. FGB's been the low bidder for the past several years for us. They've done excellent work with minimal complaints from the, the residents and the motoring public. And this is for Danforth Drive, Indian Rock Road, Lantern Ridge Road, Laurel Road, specifically from Canoe Hill to Turner Hill, Pondview Lane, Reader Lane, Toby's Lane, and West Hills Road. I don't know if you have any, any questions.
Any questions? Anyone have any questions on this?
This timing, Tiger, I guess, for the public. What do you, what do you expect?
He wants to hit the ground running next week. So the asphalt plants opened early. They opened in mid-March, March eighteen. Normally they open around mid-April, but they opened early. Thankfully, Tilcon opened up in Waterbury, which then forced ONG to open up down here. So they want to get started and, you know, there's a, specifically the one stretch on Laurel is the one that I'm receiving most complaints on. Got a complaint this morning on it, so I was able to say we, perfect timing. But yeah, he wants to hit the ground running next week.
Any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with FGB Construction in the amount of one million, eighty-one thousand, seven hundred four dollars and twenty-five cents, plus a contingency of one hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred fifty dollars for a project total of one million, two hundred forty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Plus, plus the project, oh, sorry. The project entails the milling, reclaiming, and repaving, as well as necessary improvements of various roads in town. Do I have a motion to approve? Steve, do I have a second?
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sidewalks twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. So this, this next item is for the sidewalks twenty twenty-four, Old Stanford Road from Park Street to Bristow Bird Sanctuary project itself. This has been in the making for several years. It's on a state road. We were able to receive state approval for it. We have an encroachment permit pending. The only thing we need is a contractor to be able to sign the encroachment permit, and then it'll be ratified by the state itself. We went out to a public bid and we solicited directly from eleven separate contractors. Several American Paving, Dolling Construction, FGB, Grasso, Inter County Paving, Restore Land Restoration, and Waters did not respond to the solicitation, but we did receive four bids back. Peter Lani Incorporated was the low bid at a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. We added a contingency, a fifteen percent contingency for twenty-eight thousand, five hundred, for a total of two hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. The funds are currently available. And as I said, this will be a sidewalk installation from the intersection with Park Street to Bristow, which will then include a four-space pull-off area. It'll accommodate a bus for school field trips. And there's one accessible space and four other spaces. And those spaces are actually made out of permable pavers. So because given our proximity to the wetland, we wanted to do something a little different in the area. It received a P&amp;Z eight dash twenty-four review and approval on January twenty-five, twenty twenty-two. And pending your approval, the contractor is ready to go.
Any questions?
I mean, just a comment. When you look at the bids like this, sorry, when you look at the bids and everybody says, well, how come we have local vendors getting a lot of the business in town? I mean, here's a, here's a bid that came in, what is that, eighty, almost ninety thousand dollars less? And that's why they get the, that's why they get the business.
Right. Sound is, seems to be the most competitive. Sound used to do a, a number of sidewalks in our town prior. And then they are, they're just slightly less competitive. Both are small contractors, Peter Lani Incorporated and Sound Construction are both smaller contractors. I think that lends itself to that, the lack of overhead, things of that nature.
Yeah, Tiger, is Peter, Peter Lani been the contractor for the most recent installations of the sidewalks? Same, same group? Is that right?
Same group, yes. We.
They've done beautiful work, right? Yeah.
Yeah, they did the Richmond Hill Road sidewalks, and then they did the ones on Owen Oak as well. The ones from Heritage Hill all the way to Parade Hill. They did both those last year. And we've gotten a lot of compliments on that, not just the workmanship in the material, but also the fact that we're walking in front of, and working in front of someone's house for a good portion of time. And the residents themselves have been very satisfied with his level of service, you know, accommodating their needs and wishes as far as access to their property, things of that nature. So it's been a very good fit.
Yeah, I mean, I remember just going up and down Richmond Hill while they were doing the work and, you know, moving everyone's plants and bringing everything back to, you know, looking really crisp and clean after it was put in. So that's great.
Thank you.
I just had a question. Why the specific note about who didn't bid?
Why the, why the note of who didn't? Because we've been asked questions previously, you know, so we just wanted to list exactly who, who it was solicited from. That was just full disclosure.
Did any of them say why they didn't bid?
No, no, you know, most, well, yes, some of them said they, they can't compete, you know? That they know that they just can't compete at this level, so.
Great. All right. Excuse me. If there are no further questions, if I could get an approval of a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Peter Lani, Inc., in the amount of one hundred eighty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars for plus a contingency of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars for a total project cost of two hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars. The project entails the installation of new concrete sidewalks, granite curbing, and a parking pull-off along Old Stanford Road from Park Street to the Bristow Bird Sanctuary. Steve, do I have a second?
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Test pits, Wavine Park.
Thank you. We have, we have several areas that are currently under design that we need to have some additional testing, test pits performed. One, to either see utilities beneath the surface or conditions of the walls themselves. So specifically at the potting shed in the Powerhouse Theater, we're looking to excavate along the edge of the, the, the walls themselves, the, to see whether or not the, the substructure is standard and satisfied. That was a request from our structural engineer. And then at Dunning Stadium in Acapo, there's some test pits wanting to be performed for percolation tests, things of that nature, to see exactly the materials that are underground. That was a request from our MEP consultant. That's McCord Engineering asked for those. So we asked Hussey Brothers to come in and give us a price. This is a time of material for basically two days' worth of work to come in and with the, the various landscape architect or engineer, dig those test pits to see to their satisfaction. So there'll be several, like I said, at the, at the potting shed along the exterior, the, the potting shed itself, because we're looking to lower that grade, so we want to know exactly what that wall looks like and its condition as we're lowering the grade around the potting shed. The Powerhouse Theater, similar, we're looking to try to locate the waste piping there. And then Dunning Stadium and Acapo, Acapo is specifically for some additional tests to see exactly what the materials are underneath the, in the area for drainage. So with the, the cost from Hussey's was three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Since he's exceeded his ten thousand dollar threshold for the year, we felt that it was necessary to bring it back to the board. And the funds are currently available and he'd like to get started. And some of this data is necessary for us to continue to move forward with each of the projects.
Tiger, I just have one question.
Sure.
I, I know the perk tests, that wouldn't be covered, but there was something you mentioned about some wiring and, and piping that you want to identify through some of these test pits. And it's, it's early, but there was some mapping that we were talking, we provided funds for a few months ago. And so sort of, how long before we can utilize that to maybe offset some of the needs for this?
So this, that's a great question. So this area is actually, you know, next to the patio and things that, that are actually town-owned. So we would actually have to mark it to be able to have, and then have it surveyed, if you will. The Cobbleberry Dig, when we asked the utilities to come out, they mark their facilities, not ours. These are our facilities. So the mapping itself, you know, that mapping, that future mapping that we spoke of would not help us in this situation.
Because this is for non-town owned, the mapping that we approved before is for non-town owned.
It would, well, be the entire facility plus any facilities that anyone else has on our properties. So, you know, we would, we'd be picking up our fiber, which is our fiber, but then if there are other, you know, electric and water lines, utility comes out, marks it, and then we can pick it up on the mapping. The mapping, the reason for the mapping itself is because of the overall development that we've had throughout our parks, throughout our buildings, and not necessarily having as-bills performed afterwards then give us the, the proper mapping to then go forward with another project. And we're having to do them piecemeal. Piecemeal is not cost-effective, if you will, you know, to come and do one piece and then come to another piece and another piece. It's much more cost-effective to do the entire parcel and then utilize that data and then build an as-built off of what you construct after. So now we have very good mapping, say, at Acapo, right, or when we're done with this test, but we'll have very good mapping at Acapo. Once Acapo is installed, we'll have an as-built done of Acapo, and then we'll have exactly what was, what was installed and where. So if something moved by a foot or two and it's not, you know, it's, it's compliant with the plants, but it's not in the exact location, we'd know exactly where it is.
And then you won't have to come back.
Then I don't have to come back. Again, if I want to do work, say, adjacent to Lapham, and I don't have, you know, I would be able to have that data immediately.
Okay. Any other questions?
How wide is a test pit? How big is it?
It depends upon the, the, what they're asking for. So it's really just one small bucket that he's looking to go, and then the depth that he's looking to proceed at. For some of the, some of the walls, we're looking to go three, four feet down, you know, to see exactly, to get past where we would be exposing the grade. And then others are just basically the first eighteen inches to see exactly what the perk would be.
So he just digs, digs them and puts them, puts it back?
Puts it and restores it.
They're not open. Anybody's going to fall in.
No, no, no. No, that's one of the reasons why we, we like to hire Hussey Brothers, because he, I like, he, he's sort of like the cat in the hat, where you have thing one and thing two destroy a room, and the cat in the hat comes in and repairs it. You don't know, you don't know that he was there. So, you know, most of the time that he comes in to do work for us, the residents say, did he actually come? We're like, yeah, he was already here, and the, the area is restored back to better than it was.
Amy, did you have a question? Okay. Hopefully you're there. Okay, so if I could get a motion to approve, a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Hudson Brothers excavating in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. The work entails the digging and proper backfilling and restoration of test pits at various locations in Wavine Park for several projects.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, I'll second, and I guess we just need.
Second, second.
Oh, there you go. Okay, Amy's seconding.
Yeah, sorry, guys. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Davenport Ridge repaving.
So this was for additional survey that was required at the time, prior to, prior to our paving. I apologize, it was brought in after, but I received the, the invoice late. We had asked them to come in and do some additional staking of the center line and the curb line prior to repaving to make sure that we were going to get the grades correct to in order to properly get the, the road itself to drain. We've been having problems with the road flooding and the residents nearby.
That's why I see a big, I was just on that road yesterday, and I see a big, like swath of repaved area.
That's correct. Exactly, that exact location right there, we were having problems for a number of years. And the residents have been very cooperative. The, the adjacent neighborhood's been having some flooding issues, been very cooperative with us. So at the time, we, we had a design performed by McCord Engineering, we had a survey and design performed by McCord. And then at the time of construction, we wanted to come in and stake the center line and the curb line to make sure, since we were changing the grades throughout, to have it all staked properly. So when it came in to pave it, it matched exactly what we needed to, because we had a very specific area to put the low spot in of the road to have it drain off, so that it wouldn't drain towards this property, towards the house, it would drain towards another portion of the property. And unfortunately, at the time, the, this work was performed in November. I received this invoice a week ago. So it's work that was previously performed for two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. I did not have a contingency on the original survey work, didn't anticipate having to come back to stake the center line. But this unfortunately, well, it, it was work that was required and we're, we're asking for approval post-construction.
Okay. Any questions? So you still need to redo that road?
No, the road's done. We have to just finish the exterior, the edges now.
You have to redo the edges?
We have to, we have to just finalize the, the leak-offs. That's all it is. So the road's been repaved to its proper grade. Now we just have to finalize the leak-offs in the areas where we're actually directing the water. If you will.
Okay, so it's just that little section, not the full section of Davenport. Because this, I mean, that road is still pretty, I mean, I know there's the Stanford side. I know where, because I know that area very well. And it's like, I know where the, the, you know, Stanford, New Canaan line is.
It's up the hill.
It's probably on the list if I'm going to get.
I'll take a look and see where it is on our PCI.
I just, it was, yeah, okay.
You've had, you've had a chance with those recent rains that we've had to see if everything's working okay.
It's, yeah, it's, it's working. It's, it's, it's doing what it's supposed to be doing, right? So now we just need to then tweak the last little bit of the leak-offs to make sure that it goes to exactly where we want it to go on his, on the resident's property. But we haven't had the issues that we had prior, which was actually was flooding towards this property and then entering his pool, things of that nature. So we, we wanted to get, avoid that. There's a stream in the area. The road was draining to the left of the stream. If you're looking at the house, we needed it to drain to the right of the stream so that it would stay away from the house itself.
So if you were heading towards New Canaan from Stanford, it'd be on the right-hand side?
On the right-hand side. Last, yeah, second to last property. On the right-hand side, last, yeah, second to last property on the right.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with RKW Land Surveying in the amount of two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. The work entails staking of the proposed center line and curb line grades and computation of the proposed cuts and fills in order to revise grade of existing roadway for improved drainage. Steve, do I have a second? Amy, are you there?
Uh, second.
Thanks.
Second. Yeah, second, second. No work?
Now it's a third and fourth.
This is, I'm sorry, I, I keep getting cut off, I'm sorry.
That's all right, no worries. I, I'll, I'll keep asking. It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go into the purchase order increases first.
Okay. So this next is a series of purchase order increases from the Highway Department. I tried to spell out each one. I have Dan Bakikio and Lou Boizier here from the Highway Department if there are other specific questions. But in essence, we had East Coast Sign sweeper parts. So we're asking for an additional seven thousand five hundred dollars for sweeper parts. Sweepers themselves tend to beat themselves up while, while we're using them. Granger, we have some additional shop supplies and parts that we're looking for. There's a four thousand dollar increase. We had an original PO of ninety-nine hundred dollars. This, we'll raise that to thirteen thousand nine hundred. We have Northeast Builders, which is actually Weeden Durie, a three thousand dollar increase to an existing purchase order for additional grass seed and hay for some drainage work and, and road paving as planned. Napsco, we're asking for an additional three thousand dollars. That's for the bag liners for the town center, for garbage in the downtown. Then we have Bellardinelli Tires, that's for the police fleet. The police bought seven new SUVs, and the tires on the previous models were a hundred and ninety dollars each, and now the tires on the new models are four hundred and sixty dollars each. We need to have about stock, about ten to twelve of them, and the previous models don't match the new tires, so the tires don't match. So we need new tires for the new cars. And then lastly, we have a three hundred dollar increase to Ready Care for first aid supplies. We had a original PO for fifteen hundred dollars. This will raise that amount to eighteen hundred total. But there's other specific questions I can have Danny or Lou come up and answer anything you might have.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, can you just, I, sorry.
Sure.
That, the tires for the police cars were kind of throwing me there. So the original tires were a hundred and ninety dollars on those vehicles.
No, not on those vehicles, on the previous, on the vehicles that they replaced. The tires were a hundred and ninety dollars.
Oh, okay.
Vehicles now, the tires now are four sixty. That's correct.
They're larger diameter tires and they're a different style tire. They're more like a truck tire than they are.
Right, it's an SUV now, so, so that there's a...
Well, that now has to be figured in when we're buying cars, wow.
Yes.
And the price, the price of tires is going to be...
Yeah, I know, that's true. Wow, that's, that's huge.
Right, that's, that's the reason why we're asking, because originally we came back for an increase for Bellardinelli before, and we said, we're good. But this is, this is a change that we didn't anticipate with the new, new, new cars. So I said, oh, you know, so this specifically is for these new tires for the new cars.
Okay.
And we have to have some in stock in case, because there, it's an emergency vehicle, right? So we got to have them in stock, we can't, we can't wait.
I get it, I get it. Okay. Are there any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to increase previously approved purchase orders as follows. East Coast Signs for sweeper parts for seventy-five hundred dollars. Granger for shop and road supplies for four thousand dollars.
Oh, come on.
Northeast Builder... Northeast Builders for shop and road supplies, three thousand dollars. Napsco for bag liners for town center, three thousand dollars. Bellardinelli Tires, tires for the police fleet, five thousand dollars, and Ready Care for first aid supplies for three hundred dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
Similar.
Steve, do I get a second? Amy? Okay, I'm going to second.
Second.
Okay, Amy's seconding.
Second, second, sorry.
All right. And then we'll go back to the other things later, but... Anne, do you want to... Is that okay? I didn't, all right, I just wanted to make sure. So we'll finish with Tiger and then I'll have fans.
You want to finish?
Yeah, as long as you're there, without your stuff.
I was hoping I was going to get a brief.
So the next item on the agenda is just Playhouse Theater project update. For the, you know, just Amy and Steve are aware, we, last week, the Board of Finance had a special meeting where they approved, in addition to the Playhouse project, for two hundred and eighty...
Four thousand.
Eighty-four thousand dollars. A hundred and sixty-three thousand is on the town side, and then a hundred and twenty, just under a hundred and twenty-one thousand is on Cinema Lab's side. So I'm going to let Tiger kind of go through.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. So as Deanna mentioned, we went to the Board of Finance last week. We'll be going to the council this evening for, for finalization of this appropriation. And in essence, there was some, the additional work that was required on, in essence, on the FFNE side. So on this, on a Cinema Lab side, that some could be allocated towards the town or the leaseholder improvements. And they were specifically, there was approximately fifty-eight thousand dollars for plumbing for the concession, the plating room, and the bars themselves. There was seventy-eight thousand dollars in additional design fees for our architect. And this was strictly for additional engineering for, he pays for the structural engineer, so the structural engineering costs, and then some additional architectural work for the bars in the plating room, and specifically trying to make sure that we stayed with the Health Department code requirements. Then we had the two stairs, one on either side of the, of the structure itself. They're typically, the stairs would be included in the, in the, the base contract. We had anticipated that Cinema Lab, since they were doing the floor finishes on the second and the first floors, that they would be doing the stairs to match. They did not carry that money on their side. So as it, as the cost shook out between the, the two of us and the contractor itself, it was determined that since it's a means of egress, and it would typically be in a base construction contract, the town should cover the, the floor finishes on the, on the stairs themselves to match the second and first floors. That was ten thousand eight hundred dollars. And then in February, the AV plans were finally submitted, and the equipment was much greater than what was originally anticipated. Originally anticipated, we were looking at a laptop and a, a server, if you will. Now we're at the point where the AV equipment is creating approximately three additional tons of heat that needs to be cooled, so we needed to put in a ductless AC unit for the AV room. And that was fifteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars for a total of a hundred and sixty-three, six ninety-five, sixty. And as Deanna mentioned, there were some other costs associated with the FFNE, and those would be covered by Cinema Lab themselves to a tune of a hundred and twenty thousand, six fifty-two, forty-nine.
Any questions?
Hey, Tiger, is, is there any, is there any, like, breakdown by-line item for this project to date? I don't think I see it on our tablets, like, you know, just so we have an accounting of where we are on this project in terms of all it costs. I know we have offsetting funds in various places, but just so we really have a, you know, a, a, a to-date spend and a to-spend to complete summary.
Yes, so the, the short answer is yes. We can provide that to you. We have a, we have a, in a spreadsheet just associated with the, the spend on the Cinema Lab side for the FFNE, and then we have a similar one for the town side itself. So we can, we can tabulate that for you and provide it to the board.
And, and so it's basically what has been spent to date and how much is to be spent to complete? And when, and then when do you anticipate everything completed, like opening?
The, the schedule at present, from the contractor, brings this in around June twenty-first. We're hoping for June one to bring that forward, but, because between June one and June twenty-one is punch list items and, and small items to get the, the theater open and ready. But the, the overall schedule that he gave us was Friday, June twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four, for final sign-offs from the Fire Marshal Building Inspector P&amp;Z and Health. But we're looking to bring that forward a little bit. As I mentioned, the, the schedule for June is to complete some of the remaining trade work and finalize the punch list items and prep for opening. So we're approximately three weeks in there for that. We're hoping to consolidate that.
Okay, and do we have any, does the project have on hand all of the fixtures and everything they need to do to finish this? Could there be something like, oh, we expected this to come in, it's not coming in? Are we ready to, like, wrap this up? And the, the second question is, what, what do we get the...
Oh, that's, thanks. Can you repeat the second question?
Amy, can you hear us? Amy?
Well, I mean, we're, we're, so with that timeline, we're sixty days out from June first. That's a, that's a pretty, it's pretty amazing that we're that close.
We're close.
When you drive by, it just doesn't look like sixty days, but I guess we're there. Don't, don't judge the...
Don't judge a book by the cover, right. Yeah, it's, everything's on the inside. And we can give it, we can give tours anytime after closing hours. We've given several tours to some of the council members. We're happy to have anyone else come through. A Board of Finance member reached out last week for a similar tour. Just anything after closing hours, we can set up something with Bill. To Amy's question, we have a couple of items that are still, the materials of which are waiting in there, when they were promised in thirty-four weeks and have taken fifty-plus weeks to come. We're still, there's a couple of items that are left there, but the majority of things are in-house and ready to be installed.
And just to suggest, as, as Amy said, I think tonight at the town council, it would go a little smooth if you had a little, little word document that shows the, the current breakdown for that last piece. But I'm sure there'll be a lot less questions if you have, have that ready.
The piece that I just read off?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think, did that get provided? I think that got provided. Maybe not to this board, I apologize, but I think it went to the council itself, but thank you.
And, you know, I mean, let's be honest, you know, I mean, Tiger referenced the AC, additional AC stuff that, you know, just in February. I mean, you know, it's...
We knew stuff was going to happen.
Yeah, it's, it's, and that's not really on our side, but, you know, we are where we are, and we just need to finish, and...
You've already, you've already voiced your displeasure and your line in the sand, so I think that message was sent pretty clearly.
Yeah, yeah, and everyone knows this is it, so let's just get it done and move forward and...
Well, the town's excited, there's a good buzz out there. I mean, summer's coming, hopefully we'll get, get some movies going and...
Yeah, yeah, everybody's motivated to get it finished, so. Amy, did you, Amy, are you there? I see your, I see your... Amy, I hear you, can you, can you hear us?
We can also try to answer via email for her too, or if she wants to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me just give her one more second.
Sure, it's no problem.
Can you hear us, Amy? Can you hear? All right, well, okay. So that's Wavine.
That was Playhouse.
Sorry, Playhouse. Wavine is the next one.
Steve, given her technical problems, do you want to wait?
Yeah, we probably should.
Oh.
I keep going in and out, I'm sorry.
I can hear you, Amy, can you hear us? Yeah, I mean, we could delay this till the next meeting, I guess.
Is there anything pressing that we need to...
No, no, just an update, so we, you know, we could certainly...
Well, I know, I mean, Amy's really interested in this topic.
Yeah, I know, I don't want her to miss it, so.
That's why I mentioned it, was...
Why don't I get, why don't you and I motion, move? Tucker, we're going to move to remove the Wavine House project update, and you got, you approved that?
Second.
Seconding it, we'll remove it, and then we'll just add it to the next agenda when Amy, Amy can be here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tiger. Okay, so bond sale. Thank you, Anne.
I'm bringing in front the three vendors that are over our ten thousand dollar threshold. Typically, in the past, it actually would be just paid as a check request, but being the dollar amount of these, they really need to, need to come in front of this board. We haven't bonded since twenty-twenty-one, so this is our first one to come in front. So Pullman Commley is our bond counsel. She wraps up everything in terms of the authorization all the way through to bonding in her, in her billing. Moody's, obviously, that's the rating agency, so, you know, that changed about maybe two grand from twenty-twenty-one. Munistat is our advisor, and these are all obviously entities that are required through our bonding process. And Munistat has stayed flat again through, from twenty-twenty-one to now, their fees have stayed flat. We have other smaller fees, the printing fee we have to go out. US Bank is the holding bank between the sale and the bonds. So, but they're all below the ten thousand threshold. So I'm looking for approval to move ahead for, to set up POs in these vendors.
Okay. Any questions? No, and this all got wrapped, all these fees got wrapped into...
Oh, yes, they all get, they all get wrapped into the bond issue, that's correct.
Okay.
And this is typical, Anne, we've done this year after year, so this is not a new, this is not new. This is...
Oh, yeah, you're saying the vendors and what we do? It's a typical process, the typical, typical, the required entities that you actually have to pull in for a bond sale, or the recommended practices by GFOA?
Yeah. And I was very impressed with both, you know, I mean, Moody's is what it is. I'm not sure, I was impressed with that. But, but Pullman and Commley and Munistat both did a really good job in, you know, working with us to get us over the line on that issue, so.
Agreed, and, and there's been a lot, Pullman, our bond counsel has helped a lot in all the cleanups that I've been trying to do to make sure that I have the right resolutions in front. We technically don't have to come in front of the boards, but we do for transparency so you can see everything when we move the funds.
Right, all right.
Okay, so if I could get a motion to approve from the Finance Department the following purchase orders related to the recent bond sale. Pullman and Commley for seventy-five thousand dollars, Moody's for thirty-five thousand dollars, and Munistat for fifteen thousand dollars.
Similar.
Steve?
Second.
Second? Oh, Amy's second, all right.
I'm in and out, sorry, guys, sorry.
Okay, we, I don't know if you heard, we're going to move, we're going to move the Wavine to...
I did, thank you, yeah.
Okay, good, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. On your tablets, you have the contracts under ten thousand dollars. Do you have any questions? If not, we will move to Selectmen's comments. I have nothing to, tonight is the final vote on the budget, so the town council will be taking up the budget finally tonight and voting, and then we move on to, going back to the, to the Board of Finance to set the mill rate, so. That's all I have.
Any update on the audit firm or anything?
So, Anne, why don't you come forward, because...
Because we were, we were looking at a couple of different...
So we received two for the external, and I believe six for the internal. Right now, they're looking, well, they're going to bring both in for the external, and they're looking to bring in possibly two. We haven't heard which two they may be bringing in, and it'll be probably the week of April, anything after tax day? So I think that's the sixteenth, I think it's a Tuesday to bring in the firms to interview.
Great.
For both of them.
Great, all right.
Yep.
So that's exciting.
Thank you.
And the only other thing I had was Housing Authority had a good meeting, and I think they, they're, they're doing their research and getting their...
Affordable housing?
I was going to say, we do have a housing authority too.
Always get those two confused, but that's, that's a, the progress they're making is, is great.
Yeah.
And Rich, thanks again for all the progress on the Utilities Commission. You guys have been doing a great job.
I don't know, there's a lot, I mean...
It's government, takes time.
I don't know. There's a lot of, I mean, watching, watching the last meeting. I mean, I got, I got about half of it, but, um, you know, it's impressive. You have a very impressive committee. So, um, you really have an impressive group. So... Yeah. Yeah. Amy, did you want to say something?
Yeah. That, that, just one comment what I, we make is hopefully if this will work, uh, as we move out of this budget season and move into the next budget season, I think we should try, if we have major capital projects that may be coming before the town, that's a perfect time off cycle for every department or every, um, entity in town to bring these forward ahead of time. So they can be thoroughly reviewed, you know, before the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. And, and the off cycle gives us a time really to focus on projects.
So you need the things that are already on the five-year capital plan for next year?
Yeah. I mean, I think...
Very helpful to... I'm in and out. Sorry. Yeah, sorry.
The tendency, the tendency to wait till the last minute for some of the stuff for, it's human nature, right? So we, we, we go to the point where everybody's busy and then all of a sudden budget season's coming. Oh, I've gotta do this. I've gotta get in front, get the presentation done. It's almost like we should create a, of, of a halfway point where everybody checks in on what's going on. You know?
Well, so maybe, I mean, I, I don't know that the exercise of every single capital project needs to, that exercise needs to happen. But maybe, um, you know, Amy and Steve and myself, we can, you know, kind of key in on, make a list of what you're interested in hearing some information about. Cause it's, it's a pretty big list. So we should just kind of, sort of, you know, maybe focus in on what, what's most important. Um, so, okay.
All right.
If I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Steve, Amy, are you there? I motion to adjourn. Okay.